Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to School Committee. It is February 12th, 2015, coming to you live on a Thursday evening, so don't adjust your sets. Normally, we're on Monday evenings, but we had to postpone this week due to the weather. So, welcome. Thank you for joining us. We'll start with the approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes, beginning with School Committee. It's a budget session, January 22nd, 2015. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the School Committee Budget Working Session Number Three, January 22nd, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have minutes from the Saturday morning session with the Education Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee, January 24th, 2015. Is there a motion?
I'll motion that we approve the School Committee and Education Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee Joint Budget Work Session, January 24th, 2015, minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have --
Right along.
School Committee, January 26th, 2015.
I do note, thank you for making the change that I had suggested.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee meeting, January 26th, 2015.
One more roll, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Budget Work Session, January 29th, 2015.
Finally, motion to approve Hingham School Committee Budget Work Session, January 29th, 2015, minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are current with minutes, which is great. Communications, I do not see Brad with us this evening. So, no student communications this evening. Other communications? Okay. Questions and comments from the audience? Anything not on the agenda? Hearing none? Moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Did you want to do that now, or?
Um...
I can make a quick.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the full day K update will just be very brief, correct?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
The only thing, we were wanting to do a little bit of talking about weather and so on. We could do that under the 48 hours, I think, legitimately.
Do you want to skip to the budget now?
Sure.
Why don't we do that?
Let's do that.
Okay. We'll go right to the budget. So, 6.2. So, we'll come back to 5 and 6.1. So, here we are on February 12th. Two weeks from tonight, the Advisory Committee will vote all of the budgets. Our public hearing and vote is scheduled for the 23rd. So, this is actually our, not our final opportunity, but one of our final opportunities to deliberate and to perhaps prioritize and discuss, you know, what we'd like to end up with as a budget for fiscal '16. In your packets, there is a memo that Dot and John prepared, which itemizes some things into four categories. Looks like this.
That's a packet you received tonight.
Tonight.
Came tonight. It's on the desk. And on the flip side of it, there are other possible reductions that could be looked at. So, that might be a helpful guide as we begin to discuss. If you have the materials from the joint session last week, that's a really comprehensive packet that will probably be helpful to refer to. And I don't know, Dot, if you wanted to kind of topically start the discussion, or?
Yes, well...
I mean, just real quick, just from a kind of a macro standpoint. So, just before this meeting, the Education Subcommittee of the Advisory met again, continued deliberations, and they started to identify areas where they thought perhaps we might look to prioritize, if you will, items that they perhaps felt or are beginning to feel that either are, would not necessarily be considered level services, or needs beyond level services that should be prioritized for the coming year. So, they've begun that discussion, and for the most part, they seem to be in agreement on generally the areas of the things they're looking at. You know, I think what we need to do, and particularly, you know, most of the funds go to personnel. We have to look at, you know, the different personnel asks there and, you know, look at each one to see, you know, how great the need is and whether it can be, I think they all can be justified, but in terms of the context of the discussion Advisory Committee is having. And then really start to take a hard look at all of these items to see, you know, what, if anything, any of us is willing to perhaps sacrifice in order to reduce the bottom line. You know, certainly, we're getting, you know, a pretty loud and clear message that the budget as it stands now, as presented by the administration to the joint session last week, is not something that the town is going to be able to afford. You know, what that number will be, we don't yet know. There are still some unknowns in terms of revenues, projected revenues on the town side. You know, we still don't have governor's budget for the next fiscal year. That's anticipated, I think, March 4th now, so that's really not going to help us in terms of using that information for state aid and whatnot. But I'll let Dot start to walk us through this.
Okay, so, we thought that it made most sense for us, as a school department, to prioritize categories of things rather than just going down the list and giving everything a one, two, or three. So, that's why we grouped some things. You could disagree about the grouping. You may not see, we didn't attempt to, within the category, within those boxes, to say one is more important than the other. That's kind of where your decision-making would come in. I'd call your attention to the paragraph in the memo. It is a challenge to prioritize because we presented a needs-based budget. So, in a sense, everything is a priority, but for different reasons. Some are enrollment reasons, some are workload reasons, some are special kinds of needs and populations reasons and so on. But we made a good attempt, we think, to do that. But we do understand that the budget isn't limitless, and in fact, is quite limited, and some reductions are going to be necessary. Many of these things, if we had done a cut by level services or not, many of these things are level services in the way that we think about level services. For example, many of the things that are, for example, we've got a lot in here about maintenance and about clerical support. And quite honestly, we cannot continue to function the way we've been functioning. Most of our buildings are stressed and stretched in terms of custodial and maintenance. At this office, the workload is simply incredible. So, when we think about level service, we have to think about that, and in the past, we've probably been a little too cautious in that area. In the past, we have always looked at the very first priority as serving the needs of kids. But I think it gets to a point where we can't serve the needs of kids if we can't ever get out into the buildings, for example, if we can't do some of the things that have to do with educational leadership and so on. So, we would see a lot of things as level services that an Advisory Committee might not, because I think we think about those things in a different way. So, that's what's on the first page, taking all of those things. You also have in the packet, by the way, this list that we used in the very beginning, and it's somewhat annotated with respect to things we've already taken out of the budget. So, that's in this two-page thing that you got in the packet tonight, the packet, the handouts for tonight. There's a two-page thing, and one page is the memo with a backside, and the other page is the original list. It's a full-page list of needs. And I would point out on that, that the high column was the high-needs column, and those were actually things we thought to be more like what we used to call new initiatives, except we don't use that term anymore. But that's what those things are. In the base column, we've put in there things that we've felt we had to add in there, or we've put in there things that were very large increases that we felt somebody might want an explanation of. So, there are both kinds of things on that sheet, but it's been somewhat annotated for the changes that we've made. Also, I put in there a black copy, because sometimes that colored, three-color copy is hard to read, of where we are as of last Thursday night, where we are in terms of the different categories of the budget. And there was a calculation error, not in any of the categories, but in those percentages at the right, and that those have been redone. So, as of last Thursday night, 5.5 percent increase in regular education, 8.69 percent increase in special education, and of course, the decrease in the vocational because of the tuitions. On the reverse, on the reverse side of the memo, I would call your attention to the bottom of the page first. Yesterday, we received information that we can make another $38,000 reduction in the special education tuition budget. The student will still be with us, the student who's at a placement, but she will age out in February. And therefore, we can take the tuition that we had budgeted her for the entire year, and she's a 12-month child, and we can take $38,000 of that out, reflecting the obligation that we won't have as of February of 2016. So, that's good news. So, the budget then can be reduced by $38,000. We haven't done that, but it can be reduced by $38,000, both the bottom line and the special education tuition account. So, if you make that change, then as of today, actually, as of, I should say, yes, well, it happened yesterday, I'm sorry. The change was, we became aware yesterday. So, the special ed increase is 832,370 in the tuition column. That's an 8.31 percent increase overall for special ed, and the total budget increase is there, reflecting that $38,000 less, and that whole budget is at 6.12 percent. So, that's the new news, because I told you I'd give you any new news. That's the only new news we have tonight about changes in things that happen. And then, obviously, we have to look beyond just the list of the new column things that we added, because in fact, if we got rid of all of them, you know, we're still in trouble in terms of what we anticipate will be the revenue that might be available to us. So, these are some other places that we would like some input from you on. In the end, we have to come up with a budget for the public hearing, and so we need to look at the things that are new, the things that we could go back and look at that aren't new, but that we might need to sacrifice in order to get some of the things that we think are very high need. And so, those things are things like the Plymouth River tutors, trying to provide equity with the schools that have Title I. Plymouth River does not, but South School doesn't have Title I either, and so, you know, we want to be equitable about which schools have resources and which don't, and treat them the same way. Virtual High School is something we absolutely would like to keep, but it is something that was, that's new this year. So, I'm not suggesting that we should cut these things unless they are things that you would be interested in giving up to get something else. I think I've mentioned before, I always look at where are the big numbers, and one of the big numbers in our request column was for the math tutors. And for me, that is a service kind of need. We have kids that are struggling, and it doesn't fit the enrollment criteria, but it is a high need. However, rather than see it go totally, I would think we might consider reducing it. So, instead of $20,000 per elementary school with the four schools, we could perhaps give them 15, would allow them to do something in that area of supporting elementary math needs. So, that's something to consider. We've gone through all of the revolving accounts and looked where appropriately, first of all, we can move money to offset the operating budget without getting us into a problem with what we anticipate will be the funds going into those accounts. So, there are four things that we're suggesting there. They total $90,000 to, from the field rental account to field maintenance account, transfer are offset by $10,000. From the building revolving account, that's for rentals and use of our buildings, $20,000 to heat, a utility cost. From the athletics, the athletics account, remember, has two things in it. It has the student fees that are paid, but it also has gate receipts in it. We anticipate that's something that's probably going to be up this year, because now that we have a stadium kind of facility that has a fence and gates and so on, we hope to collect, at least during the season we can use the field, more gate receipts, and therefore, moving $30,000 of that money to offset the field maintenance account. And similarly, there are gate receipts that come to us from things like basketball, that are uses of the building rather than fields, and that $30,000 might go to the maintenance/heat account from those gate receipts. So, that would be an offset to the, those are all for the operating budget, but to the various accounts that are listed there. So, that's something that we definitely would recommend. There are some things we need to watch for possible changes, the issue of the phone lines and the alarm monitoring, what's happening with the fire department. We've heard rumors that perhaps that's going to be done differently or not this year. So, it's a watch kind of item for everyone in town, not just for our budget. The offset to the facilities manager, Ted and Betty Foley and John and I met all together last week. You authorized us to meet to talk about this topic of perhaps an offset for this first year of this facilities manager position, and with the focus on that person concentrating on doing an asset assessment, capital assets, buildings in particular across town, and do it for both the town side and our side. And we talked with them about that and tried to come up with an amount that we both felt, John and I and Ted and Betty, felt comfortable recommending to the two respective boards as being a fair kind of allocation for the particular service, and we agreed on $25,000. So, that is what we're recommending to you. Obviously, you have to accept that number or not, and Ted will recommend the same number to the selectmen, and I believe that rumor is supportive of that. Obviously, they have to discuss it and take a vote, and that hasn't happened. We had last week put in a number of $30,000. We think 25 is a more realistic number, and all four of us agree on that. So, that would change the estimate from last week to move the whole budget up by 5,000. And then, special ed tuitions, and, you know, there are some discussions going about, you'll hear about those, I think, later, as to some ways we can, perhaps the phrase I use is self-insure, so that we can not lose money set aside for those tuitions that right now are uncertain. We have them in the budget because things can go the wrong way, and we don't feel comfortable not budgeting for them, but there are some ways we can deal with that. And so, the Advisory Committee will be wrestling with that. So, it's a watch thing. Is that a way that we can reasonably reduce the operating budget, but still have money to fund tuitions that need to be funded? So, that's a watch thing. And then, things to think seriously about is to think about one or two of the current elementary classroom FTEs. Because the enrollment is going down, if the enrollment were going down 30 students in one grade in one building, it would be a no-brainer. But the enrollment is going down 30 across, so that's the kind of thing that, as I look at priorities, if in order to get what I think we really need are those specialists, because we're so stretched in terms of the, we've added classes and not being able to schedule those specialists there, I'm kind of willing to sort of trade off one of those for the other. So, I think that we can pretty comfortably do that. Included in your packet tonight, just so you can see and go through the little exercise, the February 1 enrollment. When we did the original budget, we used the December 1. It's only a difference of 12 kids, but we're willing to try to use any data we can to justify what we need. So, you can look at that chart. I think that we could comfortably remove one classroom teacher, and we might have different ideas of where that would come, but not two. So, that's a notion of going back to the original budget and saying, you know, do we need some things now for different reasons than enrollment, and are we willing to make that kind of a reduction? I guess the last thing I would say is that, as you go through this exercise of prioritizing, I think there are really two questions that it would be helpful for you to ask each other and to agree on. If there are some things in the list of requests that we've asked for that you absolutely think, we don't want this, we don't need it, it is not any sort of a priority, then yes, I think you should take them out. But other than that, I think that we have still a week and a half to go until we have the budget that we have to present, and I, as I always have felt, would like to say, let's not take things out until we absolutely have to. And there will be a time, we have to take some things out. But, so, I think the idea of prioritizing means that as savings may come along over the next week or so, then we can have a roadmap, so to speak, of taking the things out in the order that you've established as priorities. So, that's really all I have to say, and I think also prioritizing perhaps in the direction of the things that you think we most need to keep rather than the others. You know, when we looked at the categories, I mean, someone could look at these and say, I can't believe that your highest priority includes, you know, a facilities manager, because that's not level services. No, but it's a huge need, and that's where sometimes the idea of level services needs base can conflict. In other words, in other cases, agreeing on middle school staffing is being important, that's in there. The student helpers and the clerical staff, that really is just a workload kind of issue. To me, it's level services. We can't provide the same service with the staffing that we had. And the category two, these are high needs to meet service demands. And the category three, those are about program improvement. And you can see the areas where, for example, in category two, it's 2.65 because we took out the one, so you see the subtraction there, and so that's 146 if you took out the other 2.65 folks there. And similarly, if you go down to category three, that parish support, if you take out $20,000 and have 16, that means 15, 60, that means 15 per school, and so that's the 59025. So, we did a few of those calculations for you. Category four are things that we think we need, a less urgent need, I guess is the way I would describe that. But we've tried to stick with the things that are needed, but realizing we have to prioritize even things that are needed.
Can I ask you, I'll just start, just a couple clarifying questions. So, on the back of this, other possible budget reductions, the recommended offsets from RAs, those are, have gone back and identified some additional revolving account offsets that we could?
Yes, these are new offsets. You already have some that are in the budget to begin with.
Yep, yep.
These are additional.
And the elementary FTEs, too, say, what would be the value of one if we were going to, would that be the M3?
Usually, we budget for elementary M3.
Which is 60?
I'll look it up in a minute.
Yep.
It's, I want to say it's 56-something, but I'll have to look at it.
Yep, okay.
Dr. Gallo, since there's so many numbers here, hypothetically, how much does category one, two, three, and four add up to, so then that would be taken out of, because right now, our total budget is?
Well, category one, two, three, and four are the things that are in that middle column that we had not already reduced.
The middle column, the high?
Yeah.
So, category one, two, and three equal basically 769,000?
Is the 759 reduced? I don't, I'll have to wait till John comes back. I don't know that when we did those reductions, those bottom lines were reduced.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, we've got so many sheets in front of us. So, and I'm just focused more on the total regular education. So, our total regulated education is proposed by the administration, is $35,234,300, an increase of 5.5 percent. And I was just trying to figure out how much of that is new initiatives compared to contractual. And what I'm gathering is, if I look at the bottom of the high column, which is approximately 769,000, that is category one, two, and three, if I understand Dr. Gallo.
No, because the new, the new high school, the...
I don't think you can break it as black and white like you're looking to do, just because...
Well, I'm just trying to get, because, you know, we have to reduce the number.
Right.
And so, I'm just trying to figure out what, how much are the new initiatives away from, away from our contractual obligations? And that's what I'm...
Well, essentially, looking at this year, okay, so, say, call it a 2 percent across-the-board increase, and then the value of steps, I think, are, it's around 2.4 percent. So, we're already over 4 percent, and if you extrapolate the steps and lanes to next year, it's probably around the same number. So, we're already, you know, for just carrying the water year to year, you know, looking at, you know, 4 to 4.5 percent. So, anything above that is, you know, other needs. Now, how do you characterize those other needs? Do you characterize them as new initiatives? Do you characterize them as level services, as some people do? Do you, I think you have to get down into the...
If that doesn't make sense, because if our, if you're saying, if this budget here is showing a 5.55 percent increase, so 1 percent, and you're saying that contractually, we're up 4.5 percent, so 1 percent on $35 million is $350,000, then there's more than $350,000 in these categories.
If I added up 638,426.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know.
Those four categories.
But some of the increases in the sped budget?
Right.
You were just talking about the regular number.
So, in that regard, and we've had some discussion, you know, and some, at the joint committee meeting, and I think advisors had some discussion about this idea of sped, and, you know, I've said a couple times, you know, I kind of see it as a whole harmless kind of thing. So, I played around with little numbers now before a couple of the reductions, so it's not going to be exactly that. But if you say sped is what it is, we're estimating it to be on one number, we may find it's some number less than that. So, if you took that number out, and then you said that the remaining part of the budget, the regular education, goes up by 4 percent, or 4 and 1/4, or 5, it just helps me kind of get to a number. So, when I did that, if I, and again, this was a week or so ago, so it's a little off, but if I took regular ed at 4 percent and the full sped request, which is now a little bit lower, it came up to a total budget of about 4.82 percent increase. Now, so it's probably now 4.7-something percent, but, you know, and the final number would have been just about $45,600,000, you know, in rough terms. Now, I don't know that that number's any better than any other number.
Yeah.
But if I look at the number here, which if I understand, Dot, on this sheet here, we've got a number that's $46,190.
Yeah, so it's about 500,000 less.
Right. It's about 500,000 less, and there's about 638 here. So, again, I don't know that that's the right number, but it's a way to look at it.
Sure.
And then, what you've called self-insurance, if we said, you know, hey, if that 836 turns out to be 536... out to be 536, great, will be 300,000 less. If that 836 turns out to be a million, then it's a million.
So let me, let me just take a, a minute and, and just talk about that topic. So we, we had a meeting this morning with Chair and Vice Chair of Advisory and Ted, Dot, Carol, and myself to talk about an idea that John and Dot had been batting around about the potential for self-insuring for, for sped tuitions. And could that be explored from a townwide perspective? And it's an interesting theory. Tom mentioned it in his meeting just prior to this, and it's a discussion that's begun and is going to be ongoing. And, you know, it may not result in action this year, but it may be something to look to put a structure in in the future. And the question of, you know, what kind of structure that might, that might form, you know, essentially looking at different, different methods of, you know, I think we all agree that the issue is not budgeting because you've got X number of kids, you know where they're assigned to go to school, you know what those tuitions are going to be, right? So it's not a budgeting problem, it's really a funding problem. It's where the source of that funding is going to come from. So there, there are options of looking at that. You know, we know that we're going to get circuit breaker in a certain amount, you know. Could that be, you know, John mentioned using 125% of that. You know, could you start to use some of that to offset in the current year, knowing that you're going to get it, but then the next year you might be, have a shortfall? The other option was fund balance. And a couple of different ways to look at it, whether it's setting up a separate trust fund, similar to what we've done with the special legislation that's going to be voted at town meeting, or what seemed to be a more popular option, self-restricting a certain amount, for instance. You know, we, and, and the reason why this came about is over the last two, three years, we've returned a large number of dollars from the budget, most of which has come from the sped budget. Because for whatever reason, we had to budget X number of dollars, the expenditures didn't end up being that much, so we had, you know, six, seven, 800,000, whatever it was, that got returned. So in a year where we have that kind of excess, could some of that be earmarked in fund balance, self-restricted? And there are a number of categories of self-restricting that are possible. GASB 54, the accounting guideline, actually requires, you know, self-restricting in, in, by light item in fund balance. And that is, you know, a, a, a potential avenue to go for, for future shortfall. So we wouldn't need to necessarily budget all of what we think we're going to have because there could be the fluctuations during the year, knowing that there would be some pool of money, right? I mean, this morning, you know, folks from advisory said, well, and Ted said, look, you know, we're over 20% fund balance, we have over $20 million in fund balance. You know, we should feel pretty comfortable about being able to self-insure in a situation like this. Now, it's not that you jump in and say, okay, we'll just write a ticket, but it's something to start thinking about and talking about. And, you know, it's, it's encouraging that, you know, folks on the town side have started to do that. So I don't know if it's something that we can do this year, but it's something that we've begun the discussion about that I'm sure will continue. Because it's not just a school issue, right? It's a, it's a townwide issue because we're talking about huge dollars. So I think potentially it's a way to approach this in a responsible way that frees up some of the...
Operating money.
...dollars that's earmarked to be used in operating in the current year.
Instead of having a, a huge amount then returned at the end of the year, and you have all those missed opportunities for the town, both sides, of how you could have spent some of that money for operating.
I mean, look where we find ourselves every February, we're crunching every dollar. We're looking at the forecast and we're saying, okay, here's, we're looking at a deficit. We have to get to, you know, you know, a balanced budget. And then at the end of the year, there's $3 million, $3 million excess that goes to fund balance. That's not just because of us, that's because of various reasons, but we've been fortunate. I mean, this is, you know, an embarrassment of riches in a way, that we've been fortunate enough in a very short period of time to get ourselves from, you know, an abysmal 8% in fund balance to 20.05% in fund balance in just a four, five-year period. And I think it's come again with, you know, you know, real strong management and fiscal responsibility. And I think, you know, advisory's played a role, selectmen have played a role, the town administrator and the school committee frankly has been a really good partner in that. And, and just one thing I wanted to, you know, someone at that meeting reminded me that I should highlight the fact that, you know, over the last number of years, we've returned money to the town when we've had an excess at the end of the fiscal year. Even in, you know, my first year on the committee, I think it was fiscal 11, that budget was approved with a $52,000 cut from level funding. And because of strong management, we still returned, I think, $120,000 or something like that at the end of, at the end of that year. And certainly over the last, you know, two, three years, we've been, we've been fortunate to have an excess for whatever reason, predominantly coming in the, in the special education account. And I was reminded that many, if not most or all of other school committees in the Commonwealth would not return those dollars, but would find other projects to use them for and spend them. I think for the most part, we agree that, you know, that would be irresponsible and that as a partner in the town, that, you know, we should return those dollars, you know. So tying them up during the year kind of puts us at a disadvantage. Is there a way that we could not have those dollars tied up if there is going to be a variance? It's hard to know if there will be a variance. You know, again, we have to budget for those kids, but is there kind of a creative way to, to approach a funding source for it?
In that regard though, you know, one thing that I know that advisory I think has done a better job over the years on is, once we approve the budget, we really need to track things. So that, for instance, last year, local receipts was up a million dollars. I don't expect that all came in on June 29th. So presumably at some time during the year, there was a recognition that, hey, there's a million dollars there, not that we should run out and spend it.
Sure.
But, you know, that we recognize, hey, if there were things that we took out of the budget that we took out because we didn't feel we had the money, and then it turns out we may have had some money to do that, it could be capital items, you know, it doesn't have to be an operating item, you know, that we ought to look at.
The car excise, usually they know by the end of January what that number's going to be. So that was something that Ted was waiting for, and I think he's being aggressive in his approach to that, that budget number for this year.
We do have a forecast meeting coming up.
Yeah.
And to touch base on some of those things.
There is one coming up. There is one coming up, and then we're also going to have Ted come, talk to the full school committee. We, you know, we haven't been able to fit it in yet just because it's been very busy, but I'm hoping that that first, you know, if, if we can't squeeze it into the 23rd, then it'll be the first meeting in March. Possibility we could get him to come on the 23rd.
Which is going to come first, the school committee presentation or the...
Larger presentation.
For?
For Ted's fiscal...
I, I don't know the answer.
I would like to follow up on Dennis's point. I think Dennis is right, that if you look at that special education budget, it's kind of a given. And we don't want to budget differently because we think we're budgeting responsibly. So that goes to Ray's point about how can we manage the funding in a better way. So you'll notice that the only changes that we would ever recommend to this budget are real changes, such as the one that we mentioned tonight, that there's a reduced tuition or hopefully not an added one, but that kind of change. Whereas as we were looking at ways to approach funding the things that we believe are the highest needs, the regular ed budget is a budget where we could look at some things that we now have that aren't extra by any means, that would have a, a consequence if we remove them and, and reduce that budget that way. By the same token, there are many more opportunities in that budget, just because we have 600-plus staff to move around, move out, retire, take leaves and so on, that can be other real changes up above. And I can't emphasize enough that I, I, I just feel so strongly that we need to protect all the things we need until the very last minute when you make a vote. And so, so I would want to emphasize that while there can be a lot of movement in this number, we shouldn't think of, of the, the level services, if you will, description by either our definition or, or advisory's definition. We shouldn't think of that as being something that's just a starting point and we ever, won't ever touch that. We need to look at needs across the board and how we can fund them or preserve them or whatever the appropriate word is.
Well, I mean, you, you shared the change today of that tuition, $38,000. So I would expect that, you know, maybe we'll get some more of those little bits and pieces over the next couple of weeks. I don't imagine we'd get variances of a few hundred thousand dollars. That's the kind of look I think we need to do.
Oh, for, for doing what we're saying we're doing. Yes, absolutely.
Can I ask you, on the high school FTEs, 2.65, can you break those down again for me and with, with dollar values assigned?
Into the, the 2.65?
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of hard to do. One is definitely science and, and one is math, and that 0.65 is going to be meeting, remember we took out 1.0 and said there were some social studies courses and some English courses that were more elective?
0.65 ELA?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was originally. But what I'm saying is we still need some English. So the 0.65 I see, and, and remember, this is based upon directors and principals in the fall, looking at just the raw enrollment at the different grades and determining what they need. What will always happen in May is that we sit down with the directors and with the principals, and we go over what children have actually selected, and we take whatever FTEs we have. And so what we projected in November might not be exactly what we need. So, so there definitely is in there a 1.0 science and there's a 1.0 math, and what we took out was pieces of social studies. And that's, that's projected, but, you know, the counts come in and kids don't select in the same patterns that you may have thought they selected and...
You know, the math and science, I mean, because we're not looking at an enrollment issue.
No, well, one of the things that happens particularly in, in, it, it is enrollment, but in science, if you have ninth graders taking biology or a physical kind of science, integrated science, and then in 10th grade, more than half of our kids take chemistry, the same teachers don't teach biology as teach because of certification licensure. So, so some of that comes into play. And then also there's this, this issue with when we sit down, we sit down with middle school, high school principals, and each one of the directors, and we go through what their needs are, and those dollars between the middle school and the high school can, can go either way.
So with the big bump of ninth graders that you currently have going to 10th grade for chemistry, that's probably you need a science teacher for 10th grade chemistry.
Yes.
Okay.
At least that's what was projected in November. But maybe they won't take chemistry, maybe they'll take the...
So while it's not similar to kind of what we see in the elementary of kind of moving kids along where there's not an increase in kids, we're not seeing an overall increase in enrollment at the high school, but we're seeing a bump and then a larger group moving from grade to grade than was there previously, and therefore you need the additional teachers to accommodate the class that needs to be taken by those kids.
And in the middle school, it's the big bump moving from sixth to seventh grade that we need to accommodate.
I only say that out loud again to kind of illustrate that it's not just a black and white numbers year to year, that it's, and it, it helps me to say it out loud to get my head around it too, that it's really delving deeply into the course by course kind of moving them along and then noticing that the numbers do change within grades, even if the overall number isn't changing significantly.
But it starts out, we ask them, how many sections? We don't say, how many teachers do you think you need? We say, how many sections? I think I'm going to need two sections of biology, and I think I'm going to need three sections of chemistry, whatever it may be. And that's why you see numbers like 2.65 or 3.4 or 2.8 or whatever. We counted that finally, so that's an estimate. But then when the students are actually enrolling the courses, which is beginning, you know, in the next month or so, things change. We always, for example, in the sixth grade, they need to decide whether they're going to stick with French or Spanish. And, and we have some data about, well, it's about a two-thirds, one-third split, but that varies. So we use real numbers, you know, and, and FTEs to the extent we can.
And the, the math and the science teachers, those are typically at what level for salary in the high school?
We budget for, at M5 typically, we budget for the secondary.
Okay. Thank you.
And M3 for elementary. That's rough.
Dr. Gallo, just go back to one thing. So category one, two, three, and four here are all...
They're all the things in the middle column.
They're all total regular education. Nothing is...
Yes, there's nothing there.
Nothing in special needs.
No. And it wouldn't, I wouldn't foresee taking or adding anything there, but...
Someone mentioned here that this also includes special needs, and I was just making sure.
Would it be helpful if we took each category and...
No, I was just...
Commented on what we feel in that category. Are we in agreement that all the items in that first category is our priority?
Yeah, I just, just to clarify and make sure I understand. So the stuff that's in the high back here.
Yeah.
So if you take this 638, 426, these four categories here, and the things that are crossed out on here, it's approximately the same, it adds up to that number, right? And there's a little difference, I just figured out.
Remember the things that we crossed out, crossed over into the other category as well.
Yeah, I see that, right.
And also we crossed out some things because we had savings in personnel that really weren't in either category.
But, but this all relates to the high, this high list over here?
Yes, it does.
None of this relates to the base list?
That's right. Not that that's off limits, but we were, we're trying to focus on those things that we said, and these are the things we've requested adding to the budgets.
So I think, I think it's a good suggestion that Carol makes, let's try to work off this sheet with the categories that have been identified. And I would suggest going from category to category, one, two, three, four, and let folks kind of voice their thoughts about priorities within the categories if they feel, no, we shouldn't do it, it's not the right time, or I don't agree, or yes, we absolutely should do it, keep it in there. I mean, obviously, you know, they've been structured as, you know, most needy is the lower number, so one, two, three, and four.
But that's the administration's recommendation.
Correct.
So the point of this is for us to weigh in. So I'll start. So category one, I agree with all the items in there. I think the short money for the student helpers for both technology and clerical is, is like, is short money, and it makes sense. And it's, actually saves us money from going out and having to get substitutes to come in in the summertime for clerical help or support, or to hire a consultant for the technology. Facilities manager, I'm, I'm behind you 100% on that. I think we need it, and I think we're going to save money in the long run, and I, I think it's a wise, a wise course.
And that would hopefully be 25,000 less.
Correct, less. Elementary specialists, we're not putting anybody on full time, we're just bumping up a few hours. I think that's very wise. So I, I'm in favor of all the category one items. Ed, you're next.
Does anyone feel differently?
The only question I would have on the...
I think she said Ed next.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. You want to...
Just go down the road. Go ahead.
I thought you said, did anybody have any?
He did.
I did, but...
We both talked at the same time.
Well, I haven't seen this page before tonight, but I did some back of the napkin arithmetic like everybody else did. We've seen this before?
No, it's new.
Oh, it's new, okay. All right.
Just for Ted.
And I, I was thinking along the lines of what Dennis was talking about, and that is, it seems as if it's the, the sped budget is a, is a whole harmless, it's a sacred, you can't, you can't touch it, and the same thing with the vocational. So I looked at the 5.5 for the, for, for that budget, and it just seems to me that we're working backwards. I think we need a number that we have to come up with.
I agree. I, I, you know, and I'm sorry if I, if you don't mind, right? Just jumping in. I don't...
Tell me off.
I'm with, I'm with Dot. I, I don't think we cut anything. I think we keep it as is for now. Why, until we have a number that we need to back into and then... And then, I'd just like to say philosophically, I mean, we're good partners to this town. We work hand in hand with advisory and Sleckman. We don't need to return every single dollar. It bothers me to no end that we spent 30 minutes discussing purchasing textbooks, which is a basic item for teaching kids for $3,000. I mean, I think you have something in here for textbook, web-based algebra. We're going to discuss spending $3,000 out of a $46 million budget on web-based algebra? I think we stop returning every single little dime that we need to. And at the end of the year, we purchase every book possible for the school system. Or, you know, if it's out of special ed, fine, buy them iPads if they need them. You know, I think it's a great road to go down. But, you know, I think you guys worked hard on putting together a budget that meets the needs of the school system. And until we have Ted here and we've all heard what's going on with the town budget, I mean, I'm inclined just to follow Dot's lead. She's been at it for so many years.
When I say, don't take anything out now, I still think prioritizing when we eventually do need to cut, which is pretty soon, that will be helpful to us. Because if we have a leave of absence that we didn't anticipate and now we have, you know, $50,000 to know where it is that, you know, you are willing to or would want to put that is helpful.
Well, then, virtual high school, Dot, I mean, that's not even on this list, on the first four categories. I mean, virtual high school, why?
Well, it's not on the list because we put it in the base.
Right.
So it's in the base. But what I'm saying is that because we've got all of these things, which we've said are things we really need, then when I go to say, where else can we find dollars, I went back to the base list. So these things, these comments here really relate to going back to revolving accounts, the base budget and so on, so...
Yeah.
So right now, virtual high school is in there, in the base budget, because we have it now for this year, it's the first year.
Right.
So there's one way of thinking about level services that, you know, we...
Maybe we cut, I mean, I just, I think the other things here are, I mean, tires for vans? How can we discuss that? Of course, you're going to buy tires.
Well, that's a special ed thing. Why don't we just bind that right now in a special ed? Because it's in 3,300B. We have $7,000 somewhere.
It may already be in that account.
Well, the tires for the vans in the other notes is for 3,300B, so that's special ed.
I don't...
No, 3,300B is special ed transportation.
I mean, I agree with Carol on one thing, though. I mean, I look at things like, Carol, this Carol here, I appreciate you wanting to go through things. At the end of the day, if they told us to cut arbitrarily $500,000, those final decisions, I rely on the administration.
Absolutely.
I'm not going to get into whether we should have 2.65 FTEs at the high school or 2.15. That's up to her. I think one thing that hurts us, though, is we should always have bigger numbers up here. I think having, when you have a $46 million budget, I do agree with you, we shouldn't be talking about $3,000 for web-based algebra. But at the same time, listing that as a priority sort of discredits us. We should only be going for the bigger ticket items. So that's just, I don't even like having those things in there. And the thing about the discussion, I thought that was just very interesting. About, I had no problem with paying for the money for the books. I thought it was just more fascinating when the faculty heads were here, they were telling us exactly what they were doing. That's why, I didn't take it that way, that we were nickel and diming them on the books. I thought we were more like learning more about the curriculum.
I mean, I think they're up here begging for them.
Because I have no problem with that and I have no problem with the web base. But I agree with Carol there saying more of a number backing into it.
So the only issue, so since I've sat through two education subcommittee meetings, they're looking for some priorities and they're open to hearing, even though it may not fit into their definition of what a level service is and we may, it's needs-based. They're basically asking us to help them make a recommendation by listening to what our priorities are. So if we don't, nobody talks about what their priorities are, then you're really tying their hands and they're making a decision now.
Yeah, they're going to come up with a number based on their priorities and then we'll have to deal with that number within our priorities. So if we help them with priorities that'll come to a number, then we can decide how to spend those dollars, right? But if we don't, then they'll come up with a number based on what they see as the priorities. Okay?
But I mean, it's the administration's priorities.
And let me just say, I agree with you. In fact, right now, you're making me rethink my vote on full day kindergarten.
I did not mean to revisit that.
Because I continue to get feedback from people who think that I sold them out on that. But I will tell you that I agree with you wholeheartedly that I want more dollars for education, not fewer dollars. But this is my fifth budget and you've been through, this is, you know, seven for you, okay? And I will tell you that it's increasingly frustrating for me to sit through and have to fit into a box called level services. And if we somehow don't, we're looked at as irresponsible and we're not being team players.
And by the rules.
It's very frustrating. So in a sense, I'm kind of trying to move in that direction so that we maintain a level of credibility as a committee. Because I think at times that suffers because we are advocates for our schoolchildren and this district, and we should be, because that's what our constituents want us to be. You know, folks that make the dollar decisions across the hall aren't elected. They have the benefit of being appointed and they don't have a constituency. They'll tell you that they're stewards of town meeting, but they don't have a constituency. We do. And we hear loud and clear from those folks every day. I know I do. So I agree with you, but I'm torn. Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to help to make some of the hard decisions that are going to end up with the right number that we can work with.
Or a better number.
Yeah.
So the facility managers thing, I've been still processing a long time. But bottom line, Irma was the one who was always pushing that, so you tell her 45,000. I don't care about the, I didn't mean to be rude by saying. But the fact is, she's the one who's been pushing it. We have, whether we like it or not, we have the most properties. She wanted the master plan.
I wouldn't put this at Irma's feet.
But I mean, that's the response. You said we should be happy about 25,000.
But we proposed that and I said early on, when I saw the size of the number, is there a way we can offset some of the cost? And the best way to do it was not try to share a person, because we really need a whole person. But if in the first year, a lot of that effort is going to go into this assessment, they need that as well. And so if you think of it in those terms, they're offsetting the cost of a project, whereas we're looking for a position, a long-term position.
I was sitting on advisory when Charlie Cristolo came in and said, we really need to hire a town engineer because we've seen on all the projects we've done how much money it's made for the town. And I think Roger Fernandez has paid, you know, tremendous, whether it's Roger or anybody else, that position has paid tremendous dividends for the town and hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings. Again, I'm not here to predict that the facilities manager is going to bring hundreds of thousands of dollars. But, you know, I think the person can pay for themselves, not maybe near one, but after that. So I'm not too concerned about that. To Andy's point, if you want to look, or to Dot's point, where the money is, the money is in, the largest numbers here are the 2.8 middle school staffing and the 2.65 high school staffing. What I don't really understand from, or would like to understand better from this, you know, there is no baseline additional staffing, that's all on high. So is this staffing that's enrollment-based? Is this adding course, is this adding courses? Is this providing better, lower, you know, smaller class sizes? Where do those five and a half people get us?
But isn't that what Ray was talking about, the bumps in like, you know, give nine...
So the 2.8th and middle school are enrollment-related because there are increased...
So why isn't that in the, why isn't that level services as part of the base?
We're not saying it is. That's what I made the comment in the paragraph was that much of what we've got here, while we defined it in terms of needs, is in my mind, level services.
So I think it's important that of the $638,000, roughly half of it is enrollment-related. Strictly enrollment-related through the teachers.
Right. And the reason why we haven't characterized it that way, you're speaking like an advisory member, Dennis. We don't use the term level services in this room. It's needs.
But it so happens that, well, Linda's the only one left, right?
So you asked for priority. Ray, you asked for priority. If I was to look at all these category 1, 2, 3, and 4, my priorities is the 2.8 middle school staffing, the 1.4 elementary specialist, the 2.65 at the high school, and then the elementary math tutors. Those would be my...
Do you want me to document this? Do you want this for the minutes?
Okay, so Andy, start over.
Oh, so in category 1, the second line item, 2.8 middle school staffing.
Yep.
The 1.4 elementary specialist. Moving to category 2, the 2.65 high school FTEs.
Yep.
And then in category 3, the elementary math tutor, math tutors, yeah. And then, of course, I think we should figure out a way how to pay for the web-based algebra. And if we come up with a web-based French, we can do that, too.
And you'll notice that the web-based algebra, we certainly plan to move ahead. The capital piece of it has been funded, which is a great thing. But the number is small enough that I think we can get it funded somehow. So we would plan to go forward with that regardless of this decision.
Okay, so we've got Andy's priorities. How do you want to do this?
Are we all, are we all, are we all interested in prioritizing like that? No, no, it's good. I appreciate it.
Because I was listening to what people said. Carol had, this Carol had a very good point about just keeping it and then dealing with the numbers. I do agree with Carol Y. Falvey that, that at the end of the day, I trust the administration to make...
Call you Carol Chambers.
Carol, Carol with a Y. I apologize.
I'll just add, since I already weighed into my category 1, I would, on some additional items, the high school teachers, I would be flexible on that number, but I would definitely like to see us put some staff at the high school. And I would, I'm not sure what that number is. I think it depends. But certainly, I'd like to see some additional staff put there. The elementary math tutor, I would like to see some of money, but I'm flexible on that as well. Some of the smaller, I'm not going to even talk about some of the smaller expenses because I agree with everybody else. I think they'll find a way to... And the maintenance worker, because I do have a priority on the facilities manager, the maintenance worker, I'm going to put a hold on that for now. Not saying yes, not saying no.
That's easy for me. I'll say exactly what Carol said. But I would add the facilities manager. I think that's very important.
Yeah, I had put that initially, the facilities manager.
So whatever you did, just put another line right down the category.
Okay.
Say it, Trip.
So I unapologetically admit to having had my budget training on the dark side.
That's right.
And Dennis.
So you turned. They turned you.
They did.
That's right, Dennis.
But we don't know if she turned or not.
I remember your vote for that fiscal 11 budget.
Yes, I did. So, again, in my head...
Have a good trip.
Yep. In my head, the, like I say, I kind of think of it as, the special ed is what the special ed is. The regular ed, we know that just with steps and lanes and contractual increases and so forth, we're talking about, I don't know what the number actually is, 3.5% or some number like that probably. And because of the enrollment-related things, you know, I think we're probably over 4% in regular ed. So, you know, I'm, in terms of what Carol Y. is saying, you know, I think we look at the number, we try to justify that A number or support a number, if you will. And to me, of this $638,000, you know, well over half of it, and probably more than half of it, is enrollment-related and what I would consider level services. So therefore...
Level services. Like you don't say recession, like bagel or something.
You don't say snow either.
I would say that who would not be named. So, you know, to me, as I say, I kind of thought about it in this idea that, you know, there's probably a number in here that's easily justifiable that is, you know, approaching $46 million, which is a little less than where we are today. And within that number, I think, you know, with most of these, I'm in agreement with. You know, if we had to cut a couple hundred thousand dollars out, you know, I would pick things probably not at the staffing level. You know, perhaps the maintenance piece. I'm a big believer, as you've all heard me talking about, the facilities and looking out and so forth. And I do think it's an investment-type thing. So that's kind of where I would look for it. But, you know, again, in a $46 million budget, you know, plus or minus a half a percent is, you know, $200,000, $300,000. So it's tough, which is why, and because we tend to be on the conservative side and the pessimistic side, if you will, as to, you know, what's going to happen, you know, I think most of those things could probably, if we can get up to that $46 million number, most of those things can probably be included.
Okay, my turn. I would say as a priority, the middle school staffing, the 2.8, and the elementary specialists as well. And then I agree with Carol with an O about the high school staffing, that I'd like to see something happening there, but as we know, that always shifts with the choices of what students pick. So that's a priority for me, but I guess that one can be adjusted as we move along in time. I, when I saw the category 1 list, they were all things I was thinking of myself. Well, the student helpers and the tires for the vans, I hadn't thought of those, but tires for vans, yes, just have to do that. The student helpers, possibly, maybe we don't have to pay them as much as you had proposed to shave a little bit, but I think they are a very cost, good value to get the work done we need on launching the new technology initiatives and managing all the state mandate paperwork. So I would support that. I, so I'm looking at enrollment, oh, and the facilities manager, that is a priority for me. And especially if we can have the town side contribute to that. We've gotten good positive response so far from Capitol. And if we're going to be able to do all of that, we have to have someone to supervise all that and manage all of that. And I'd also like to see John not be as frantic as he can be. And he really deserves that higher-level support in your office. And I think we can get a lot of value from a supervisor for all of the staff. So to me, that's a priority over a maintenance worker, except I understand, we still need the maintenance worker, but the facilities manager will be a priority. I'd like to charm in that, chime in that I think additional offsets make sense. And I think we should look at the elementary staffing. You know, I looked at the February staffing and, you know, depending on how it all flows out, we don't know. But that's something that, you know, it looks like there's a couple areas we could do, one or...
There is a consequence, but the consequence for removing one teacher is in one building, in one grade, in typically four classrooms.
Is everyone weighed in? Yeah, everyone has. No, I haven't, so I will. Oh, did you? I'm sorry. You said you didn't want to, but please, feel free.
I pretty much agree, I'm just trying to make this quick, with Carol and Ed, although I really like the, I also like the facilities manager.
I included that. It's part of mine.
You just kind of unhold. I have it...
No, 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 the maintenance worker, I was unhold.
Oh, maintenance worker. Oh, it's a good thing.
Facilities manager, that was part of my first statement on category 1. I'm all for that.
We're all in on category 1.
We're all in on category 1. Okay.
I'm all in on category 1 also. And then also the high school FTEs, the maintenance worker. And of course, web-based algebra.
What was the last one, Carol?
Web-based algebra. Web-based algebra.
So, I think essentially all of category one are the most important. I would say out of that, the middle school staffing and the facilities manager and the elementary specialists are things that we can't do without. In category two, I think some number of additional FTEs at the high school, I don't know that 2.65 is the right number. I don't know if it's 1.65 or .65, but I could be convinced. But maybe this isn't the year that we go for all of those positions, and we try to spread it over a couple of years. Because we will start to see, keep in mind, we are going to start to need to look at the high school in a few years because that bubble of enrollment is going to move up there. So, we are going to be looking to add staff at the high school. In next year and the ensuing years. So, maybe we start to do a little bit this year and then perhaps spread it out and do more next year if we can. I think the maintenance worker is important. I think less important than the facilities manager. But I do think it's important because I'm aware of the backlog of maintenance jobs that exist. In category three, I think the key thing there is the math tutors at the elementary I agree, the off, finding additional offsets is important if we can, if we can manage that. I think that, that'll go a long way. I mean, that's, that's 90,000 additional right there, which is great. I do think we could look at collapsing one elementary teacher. I think we have, we're up to 95 sections this year. I think last year, we had 94. And I know, you know, the increase was based on moving along within the numbers. But in just taking a look, there's, there's at least one place where I think we could collapse and still have a reasonable class size, but that's for you, you all to decide. So, that's something I think we could look at. And I think if you take a look, you know, at all those items, it, it does, it does start to add up.
Okay, this has been very helpful.
So, just in terms of the process, so we have this, in two weeks, well, not quite two weeks, I guess, we have the public session and we'll be voting that night. What, you know, we will need to ha-, we'll presumably, like you say, have more feedback from the forecast and whatever. So, how do we get, how do we get information between now and then, knowing that next week is a tough, tough week as well, you know, being the vacation week, so that we come in, you know, as informed as we can for that?
What I'm going to try to do is, is, I think the 23rd, the morning of the 23rd is when we're having the forecast meeting, at least that's when it's been scheduled. I'm going to ask Ted if he can come to our meeting at the beginning of the 23rd. That might make it a long meeting. But if he can come at the outset and give us 10 minutes on forecast and where we are on the budget, you know, by then, we'll have more information available, and the administration will be-
We would be putting forth a budget based upon changes between now and then and the kinds of things that we've heard here. What is really tough, though, is not to have some sort of a target, you know, and not to the 10th of a percent maybe, but it's really hard not to have some idea of, of where we're going.
Yeah. And I think we'll, we'll continue our discussions with folks across the hall over the next week and hope to kind of get a better sense of what that number is. I mean, right now, all they're saying is, okay, with your number, you're a million eight and a whole. Okay, well, I'm hoping that in about five days, we know better that it's not really a million eight, it's more like X, you know?
But, you know, the, the number that we need as a target is the bottom line. What's the bottom-line target going to be? Because while we're not going to take anything out of special ed and hopefully not put anything in either, there may be some more reducing of that. And so, it's that bottom-line number that I think is the most important for us to have as a target.
And just to remind folks, so, you know, I think there was a comment made in the, in the education subcommittee meeting earlier tonight about the amount, or percentage, that our budget has grown over the last, you know, few years. And I think the reference was a little bit higher than what the actual number was. Last year, I think it was a 3.94%, if I remember. We were just above 4% and it got knocked down, in my opinion, for optics. And then we were able to restore that 112,000 for the, for the adjustment counselors, and we were able to find that based on the retirements that came afterward. The year before was a 3.52% increase, I believe. So, we've been under that 4% year over year for the last couple of years, and I think before that, we were even lower than that. I think it was 2-point-something the year before. So, you know, I think, I think we've done a really good job being team players and coming in at a, at a responsible number in years where the town has been doing okay. So-
What's our, what do we have in reserves again?
20.05%, over $20 million.
I didn't hear you.
20.05% of our annual expenditures, which is over $20 million.
And what were the guidelines?
Guideline in the new policy is 16 to 20%. We have exceeded the top threshold.
I was wondering.
So, one other thing, my recollection from the schedule is that the AdCom Subcommittee is going to meet just before our meeting on the 23rd. So, presumably, they will have a recommendation after that meeting?
No, they're meeting on the 24th.
24th, I'm sorry.
They're going to wait for our-
Okay, good.
They're going to wait for our hearing on the 23rd. They're going to meet at 6:00, I think, on the 24th, before their recommendation to the full AdCom. So, that's a buckle up for that week. That's a full week.
And you remember from last year that you, you took a vote on a budget, and they took a vote on a budget, and it was different. And the selectmen took their vote, and it was the same as advisory. So, ultimately, there was agreement ultimately, and, and I certainly believe personally that we got a good budget. We got a lot of things in that that were important, that we needed, but that it didn't start out being that way. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just saying that-
Right.
Last year, at least, we didn't have agreement initially, but we did ultimately.
And I think it's important to note that also, you know, we did get a good budget last year, and we did fulfill and satisfy a number of needs, but that doesn't mean we satisfied and fulfilled all of the needs. And it doesn't mean that just because we fulfilled and satisfied certain needs in one year, that we don't have additional or new needs the following year or ensuing years. So, yes, we've been fortunate enough to be able to restore some things that were lost five years ago, six years ago, when we opened East. But that doesn't mean to say that we've completely caught up to where we should be, where we want to be.
Well, the elementary specialists are a perfect example of that.
Absolutely. That's, that's a very-
The management is-
Exactly. So, we're still, we're still not whole, I would say, and, you know, every year, needs change, needs evolve. And remember, in my opinion at least, we're not looking to just educate kids at a particular level. People don't move to this town. We have great services in this town, elder services, fire department, police department, DPW, what have you. People are moving to this town for the schools, period. It's just the bottom line. People are moving to this town for the schools. And I think it's important that we don't just look at sustaining a level, but rather looking to improve, looking to expand, looking to explore, you know, new initiatives. And, you know, as we've embarked on this technology initiative, that costs money to sustain, and year after year, it's going to, going to evolve. And, you know, beyond technology, new courses and new, you know, new other things that we need to look at, they're going to cost money. And, you know, education will continue to evolve, and we have to try to keep up with it if we want to continue to offer that top-rate education that folks move to this town for.
So, just one of the things, I'm looking at the sheet here, which we've all seen a number of times now, but, you know, the special, if you look at the special ed budget, which is up $832,000 versus last year, but if you look back to budget 2012, '13, it's only up $400,000. So, in three years-
Right, because it-
In three years, that budget is up $400,000, or about 4% in three years. Now, again, we can't take credit for that, but, although we can like to take credit for it, but we can't take credit for that. But on the other hand, it makes that, you know, oh my God, it's up 8% this year. You know, what happened?
Then when you were down 11%.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So.
So, Doc, just following up on something that you mentioned earlier about the vote, because we're not going to have all the information that we need. We may or may not have Ted come to update us. We, we won't know what the governor's budget is. So, you know, so maybe we vote, you know, what we think is the, is the amount that we need. And like you said, last year, we kind of came to a consensus and, because we're still not going to have every, all the information that we need to make a really educated decision.
And we will, we will make a proposal. We'll make a budget proposal. These are the things that should be in or out, these are the changes and so on, and then you wrestle with whether or not that reflects, you know, what your consensus is. There was pretty good consensus, as I listened here, about at least the highest priority things. And then, and then you vote. But at the same time, last year, we had a better sense of what it was we had to get to. And we don't have, I mean, I, we've heard a lot of discussion about that because the discussion about the, the history and so on is kind of relevant. We've had some discussion about what folks perceive to be level services and what we perceive to be high needs and so on, but, but I'm not sensing that I have a good idea. And we, we know there's an overall deficit that's a very big number, but I'm not having a good sense of how much of that we kind of own or have responsibility for. So, it, it is more challenging than last year in that sense.
Well, I think it makes it all the more hard that, you know, all the other budgets essentially get done in December, and they're waiting for ours. So, they get to a number, and then anything that comes in above that causes the deficit. So, they look at us and say, okay, you have to get down. You know, it's just a function of how we have to budget, and it's unfortunate of the time, but Dennis?
Yeah, well, I was just going to say that, so regardless of whether Ted can join us or not on the 23rd, if you can send out to us, you know, that forecast that come, you know, the document that comes out of that meeting-
Yep.
It may be helpful for all of us to see that prior to the meeting, to get some sense of where, where things are.
Yep.
Yeah.
And not having the governor's budget is a challenge because-
It is, March 4th is supposed to be out right now.
There are a lot of things about that, worry about circuit breaker and all those other things, too, that, that we just don't know.
Well, again, maybe in the overall scheme of things, you know, back, back in the old days, not as old as Doc may remember, but, you know, we, we used to not do the budget till like March 10th, or 8th or 9th or 10th. So, I'm not saying that was a good idea because it really got you up to the, but, you know, particularly this year, where we've crunched it back, you know, to, to the 26th or 27th, whatever it is of February, it, it makes it tough.
It was only a few years ago that we did the March votes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I remember March 8th, March 9th, yeah, 10th, yeah.
But if doing it this way gets us closer to having the real target, that's time well spent, I guess.
Anybody else have anything they want to add on the budget before we move on? As if that wasn't enough. We weren't kidding about budget season, folks, so. Okay. Yeah, I had in my mind I was going to take a particular train, and all of a sudden, I got an alert by email that said that train was going to be canceled, so I had to get on an earlier train or else I wasn't going to get home. It's nuts. Okay. All right, so we're going back to five, superintendent's report.
Right. I mentioned the Rennie Center report, actually, I mentioned it last week at the joint meeting about the condition of education and the Commonwealth, and I think it's well worth reading. The report itself is, is not really very thick, but thicker than I wanted to copy. So, it is in the Dropbox, as is the summary of the data, which is very easy reading and very brief, that is in your packet. So, you know, it focuses on what action plans are in order, and as I mentioned at the joint meeting, two of them are, really speak to, to me, is things that we focused our budget on, one being providing support for kids, that it's more than about academics and what are the other kinds of supports that, that we need. And the other is about our early education, in particular, preschool education, but I think that's based on the assumption that we already have a full-day kindergarten. So, that, so I wanted to mention that. The second thing is full-day kindergarten update. So, based upon your vote from last week, we've put together a draft real scale, very much like the scale that we use in the survey. And I forwarded that to our little working group, Ray, Carol, and Lizer. And since I'm going to be out of town, and, and Lizer's probably closest to this, I would ask Carol and Ray to forward any comments to Lizer, and Lizer can then interact with Pam. This is a high priority to get to DESE because we can't do our kindergarten enrollment unless we have this for the packet. So, so I'd appreciate that, that getting done. We met yesterday, Liz and I met with Liz Costanza and Becky Case about the preschool, and, and really get good information. I was, I wasn't optimistic we'd have as much information as we had, and we came away being able to make some really, what I think are good, concrete decisions about how we'll handle what would have been the integrated kindergarten. First of all, they brought numbers, actual numbers of kids, and there are probably, I'm going to say, an average of four, couple cases, five children that would have been recommended for the integrated kindergarten in each of the buildings. So, that's great. So, that means, that small number means they could fit into one of the kindergarten sections, which is also great because you can be more efficient about some of the services, whether it be speech language or OT and that manner. So, that's a great thing. There are also going to be in the intensive program, four or five, that's the second program back at East School. One of the concerns that I think parents have had is what is the model going to be? And with the numbers that we have and knowing who the children are, we see the model being almost identical to what it is for grades one through five. And that is, there will be classrooms where kids, for the most part, will receive their classes, their services within the classroom, but sometimes they will need to be pulled out for certain kinds of therapies or certain kinds of support. That's not different. I know parents are concerned about whether or not they, kids could stay in their district school, and everybody can go to their district school, which is great because then they're there for K to five. That's great developmentally and also meets a parent need. We also currently have two duly-certified teachers that are teaching our current integrated program. And this year, one is at Plymouth River and one is at South. We're going to be hiring five new kindergarten teachers. So, our intent would be to hire two of them to be duly-certified so that then each of the four buildings will have a duly-certified teacher for the kindergarten class that has those, those children with the IEPs. Another issue that I think we came to a good resolution on was this issue of how do you determine which children with the IEPs have waived tuition? And we thought a lot about it. Can we come up with some concrete criteria? And we did. And it's very simple. And the criteria is that if a child has an IEP, when they enter our door at kindergarten, then those children should have a waived tuition. The total number of children in the integrated program, or what would have been the integrated program, is a number like 14 to 15 children. And we looked at pre-K, the number of children coming up through, from pre-K for, for the subsequent years, and we looked at the number of children in kindergarten currently that have IEPs. And it just seemed to us that it was not that many children more. So, rather than have this, this discussion going and difficulty in making decisions, that we would say, if you have an IEP and you're entering our kindergarten, that would be a waived tuition. And then we, of course, would have to look at any children who may be new to Hingham coming in and, and, and kind of say, are these children going to enter with an IEP? Probably if someone new coming in, if they didn't have an IEP, might be going through- Probably if someone new coming in, if they didn't have an I E P, might be going through a process of evaluation and a team meeting and so on. But ultimately, if they become children with an I E P, we can make it waived. And, and so we don't see it being that much more money to just avoid that, that whole issue and both philosophically and from a financial perspective. So, so I think we have a plan for-
That's right. No, because I've been getting a lot of those questions.
Yeah, I, I think so.
And I know Liza and I are going to visit some P T Os in a couple of weeks.
That's right, so that's good that you-
And, and we'll be able to answer those questions, so, so that'll be good. It's interesting, I, I got a question recently referring to, you know, when, when there was a, an effort to put full day K in, in two thousand nine. Why, when the money wasn't available, school committee then didn't immediately say, oh, let's just do a tuition-based program? If folks can see the amount of time that we have spent developing this tuition-based program, it's been months. It would not have been possible to get off the ground, to gather the information-
But I think the other thing was, back then, the idea of full day just came off the table so early in the process. Here, we had the idea was going to stick. It was only how we were going to fund it ultimately. But back then, there was not as much consensus that full day, let alone full day for all, was as higher priority as, as people think it is now.
I think you've seen over the past several years, the amount of kids that have come into first grade instead of kindergarten. So, you knew that in the community, that was a want. People want their kids to go-
And that was not as obvious, is a good point, Carol.
What maybe wasn't as obvious earlier.
And a push from the teachers.
Yeah.
That the teachers really wanted the value for the, the first grade teachers.
So, what we're in the process of doing now is we have to reschedule our meeting that we missed this week.
Yes.
But we're working on the kindergarten packet, and the kindergarten packet has to have in it the typical things we would have in, for an enrollment packet, but also has to have that financial piece. So, when we were discussing this on Thursday night, there was kind of some questions about, well, what happens if, in terms of the guidelines that the state has about things like having a, a deposit, that kind of thing. So, I included in your packet tonight, information from the state that just kind of summarizes what we will draw from as we put together information to go with the scale for the, for the parents. So, so that's it on the full day kindergarten. I would mention two other things. One is last Friday, we, we taped at H Cam, the newest superintendent spotlight episode, and it was on social learning and the adjustment counselors and Heather Rodriguez and Catherine Rhine from East School and Jessica Hoagay, who's the new foster adjustment counselor. And, and we taped that segment, and it is available now on YouTube. I can forward it to you, and it also will be shown Tuesday nights as the spotlight-
At seven PM on the education channel.
PM, right. And that's channels ninety-seven, if you have Comcast, I'm not sure.
Twenty-nine on Verizon.
Ninety-seven or twenty-nine Verizon. So, I think it, it, it's good. It's good information. It's dense information, and I, I am aware that there are a number of folks who like to get their information in bullets and snippets and, but when we went into this notion, it was different. It was for people who wanted more information on a particular topic. So, so I think it's well done. I think it has some taping that was done in each of the four elementary schools. We do talk about what happens at the secondary, but it's different from what happens at the elementary. The only thing I would say is, is I looked at the YouTube on both my iPad and my computer, and that it seems to me that the sound, not so much the quality of the sound, but it's not very loud unless you use earphones, and then it's fine.
Yeah. I've actually found that, yeah, it's not a problem on TV, but it's when you watch it on the computer, the sound quality-
I'm glad on the TV it comes-
And I did mention that to Kitty Geiger a few weeks ago because I was watching a particular episode and the sound wasn't good. So, she said that they could do something about that.
Okay.
You also need to make sure on YouTube, it kind of is the bottom toward the left-hand corner, there's actually a bar that you can put across to raise the sound level.
Yeah, and, but even doing that, and even doing it on my computer and the, and we, so we tried it on different computers in the office, and it does seem to be faint.
I think it's a source issue that, that can be adjusted.
Right, so. And so, we've got a literacy one in progress. I'm not sure if we'll do that one next, but any ideas about another topic, let me know about that.
Dot, I think a math one would be good, especially-
Oh, yeah, we did talk about math.
I talked to, after we talked about the program of studies-
Yeah.
And I had a conversation with Dave Jewett, and, and I thought, oh, you know, this would be-
That's a good idea.
A good thing for parents to understand the sequencing or how do you come out and, you know, there's a lot of changes in-
Why isn't it the way it was when I went to school, kind of thing?
And everyday math in the elementary and then middle school.
And certainly both Blake and Julie are dynamic kinds of speakers and credencing people, so that's a good idea. Okay. Did you want to talk about the weather?
I'm sorry.
Well, two things about, about weather that we're going to talk about tonight. One, I just was going to give you an update of how things have gone and where we are with respect to what we've been doing, other than shoveling.
Oh, yeah, the snow, yes, absolutely.
And then the other issue of, you know, at some point, we need to make a decision about makeup, not tonight, but we need to make the decision and so-
So, yeah, so obviously, we've now missed six days of school because of snow, which, if we tacked on to the end of the school year, would put us at June twenty-third. We certainly can look at alternatives to that.
Or for some of it.
Right. But, yeah, why don't you, why don't you just share an update about-
Aren't there five days built in?
But it doesn't really matter if they're built in or not.
Still need a hundred eighty.
We have to go a hundred eighty days, so.
Okay, so I see, so a hundred eighty-five, five would take us to June twenty-second. I, I, thank you. Okay, got it.
So, anyway, things have gone pretty well. I, I want to compliment certainly our staff. It's incredible. If we had just one storm, that's tiring enough. But these are people who in school, in session, have to do their jobs, but also are having to do plowing and shoveling and, and getting on the roof. And when I mentioned in the parent email the other day, Katie is up there with them on the roof, and they're identifying the things that they need to do to keep drains open and to make sure our equipment is protected on the roof and to remove drifts and unreasonable amounts of snow. We've now had three separate events, and after each of those events, they have been removing snow as well. And I wouldn't want anyone to think we can clear the roofs. We can't, and, and no one can do that. But we can keep it at what is a reasonable level. We can make sure that the drains remain open so that as the snow melts underneath, we don't have pooling of water, which adds weight. And that was one of the issues at the middle school, was pooling of water. So, I'm really proud of what they've, what they've done overall, snow removal, plowing, shoveling, multiple times, coming in early, staying late, and have done a terrific job. As well, we couldn't possibly be where we are without D P W. They are terrific. They're the people that have the big equipment. You know, I used to think power was in the hands of, of folks who had titles and high salaries and interesting job descriptions and all of that, but power really is in the, in the hands of those who have the big trucks and the front-end loaders and, you know, we all-
Who can run the backhoe, right?
Right, we all have a different perspective on that. But they do have big equipment, and we can't possibly do our lots without big equipment. And so, you know, I know that people continue to be concerned, as I am, that sidewalks aren't plowed and that there are high banks and that there's danger out there, and there is. But those things aren't going to happen, they're not going to change with one more snow day. They're not going to change unless Mother Nature, you know, and, and time do their job. And now we're looking at another major storm, at least as I heard the forecast around five tonight. So, so there's still more work to do, but, but we, we have worked really well, very cooperatively with, with D P W. And I would say Betty, Betty Foley at Town Hall. Betty is sort of the liaison on the Town Hall side with the D P W. And, you know, we called the other day after we sent the bus around and said there are some corners that are tight, and, and she made sure that those things happened. And so, so we're fortunate, and that's part of the reason that we were in school yesterday and today, and some people still aren't, that level of cooperation. So, so we're feeling good, but we're uneasy about another storm coming, what will be, will be.
Yeah, I, I definitely like to, to echo that and thank Betty for her efforts in getting D P W to make our lots a priority on Tuesday morning, because there was some concern that maybe they wouldn't get to them till Tuesday afternoon, and we wouldn't necessarily be ready for Wednesday. So, that was great. You know, Katie Hartman, can't say enough about her, and maybe the last, the best hire in the last decade, moving her from head custodian at East to custodial supervisor. She has instituted this roof protocol as well, got on the roof of all the buildings, making sure to remove snow, drifting snow, clearing the drains. You know, when we got questions about that from folks, we had answers, and it was great. You know, Paul Field has, has done a great job, you know, getting, getting the grounds in shape and, and moving the snow, thanks to Randy Sylvester and Chief Duff, D P W and Fire for, for their efforts as well. And I did, I did see something on social media this afternoon that there's a group of folks who are putting together a little thank you, I think, for, for our, for our folks, which is nice to see. There's a recognition of, of the long hours and the tireless efforts. So, that's, that's nice to see and well deserved, so.
The only other thing I want to say on the topic is that these were three storms that were forecast well in advance, and the forecasts were pretty clear that it was going to be snow that would be here, would blanket our area. And so, it was possible for me to feel comfortable the day before, the night before, calling off school. I, I do want to say that there will be storms, maybe not anymore this year, hopefully, but there will be storms where that forecast is less certain and where I'm going to want to wait until the morning to make a decision. Waiting until the morning means you get new weather at four twenty-five that is on. Waiting until the morning means that if work has been done overnight, you can drive around and assess the readiness of things. So, I wouldn't want anyone to think that I, I can always make a decision the night before. I feel decisions ought to be made on the data that you have. So, that's a concern because I, I think we end up with, with parents who see things from the perspective of their need, and their need is to have childcare, obviously an important need. But we've tried to encourage people to have backup plans that you can just take off your shelf when you need it at the last minute. And, and so, I have to make my decision based upon whether or not we can open school and have priority to have school as many days as we can. And those two needs of the two groups don't always jive. So, I've had a lot of wonderful feedback from parents, you know, parents have been appreciative of the notices and the information and all of that. But when we've had negative feedback, it's been on calling off school on the morning rather than the night. And I think I just have to defend my, my way of thinking about that, that, sure, I'd like to let people know ahead if I have the data to do that, but I, but I can't always, always do that. And then the other, it was a frustrating situation that it wasn't enough to call off school the night before, that some people wanted to be earlier in the day before, and again, the childcare issue comes up. And I, I do understand, I was a working mom too, and I do understand that it's hard, but planning ahead always helps most situations that are, that are challenging, so.
It's also important to keep, keep in mind that, you know, just because a neighboring town might close, doesn't mean that we are similarly situated, right? So, they may not have the equipment that we have. They may not have the manpower. They may not have the ability to clear and make safe that we can.
Or they have flooding and we don't.
Or, right, so-
Power outages and we don't.
All the circumstances are, are different, and, you know, I think Dot does a great job, and John does a great job, Ellen, you know, in communicating with folks as early as they possibly can, being responsible in the decisions that are made. And, you know, like you said, folks just have to be prepared.
Dr. Gallow, do you still hear from Jimmy?
No, I have not heard from Jimmy. Actually, I didn't hear from, I heard from only one student in this series of storms. Often I hear from a lot, but only one, and it was a young lady who yesterday morning sent me an email at five thirty and said, I think it's too dangerous to have school, and is it too late for you to change your-
She's probably sitting at a test on her desk.
Decision, I don't know. But in the course of all of this, I did ask parents for some feedback because, you know, we might need to have some alternatives beyond going the end of June. And, and I meant alternatives to, not that we can't, I mean, it could be your decision. Ultimately, those days in June are legal up until the point where we have no fiscal budget anymore. So, that is always an option, but, but people were wonderfully creative. I probably got back a hundred responses, and, and I think it was a good exercise because in some cases, folks said to me, well, we talked about it at the dinner table, and this is what the kids think. And it was nice to hear that. The, the thing I want to emphasize is that in the end, there are really only a few alternatives on the table because some of the creative things that people thought about were common sense, good ideas, simply that our commissioner would not accept those as alternatives to full days. So, release days, for example, we, we could make all of our release days from here to the end of the year, full days, and there may be some merit. In fact, we talked today with the elementary principals about, about one of those days of, just to get kids in school more time just before MCAS. So, good for some reasons, but it would not mean anything in terms of the one eighty-day requirement. A lot of people sent me information about programs in Wisconsin and New Hampshire and where kids have a home learning, and it might be a, a bookbag kind of a set of assignments, or it might be something electronic. And we actually had teachers that were doing some electronic stuff, particularly our AP teachers. A number of our AP teachers have sent home assignments and get kids working and lowering the anxiety level of both the teacher and the, and the student in, in that regard. And those are wonderful, and can we explore doing more of that? Yeah, and we should. But will that meet the one hundred eighty-day requirement? It won't. So, when it comes all down to it, really the only options under the current rules, and unless there was some sort of a waiver that we can all hope for, it really comes down to days in June, Memorial Day or-
Good Friday.
Good Friday, April vacation, or Saturdays. Or a combination of those, which probably is a more direction.
Could you do half-days on Saturdays?
Well-
That's what they did at the middle school.
Really, what he says in his memo is they have to be full days. But this is what we did, which I think is fully within the intent of the memo. When we did the two Saturdays a few years ago with the middle school, we wanted everybody to end in the middle school. We were removing snow for two days, and they had two days more. What we did for the middle school was to say, we will take two days that were going to be at the middle school, legitimate, release days, and we will make those full days. And then we will trade off, so the two additional days we can make up will be the release days. So, I, you know, we had the same number of full and release days. We didn't play any games with that, but we switched them off, so.
So, the conversation with several high schoolers that I had were definitely Good Friday, they would take that.
I would say the people I heard from, that was kind of a high priority.
High priority. Do not take April vacation away because by the time we get to April vacation, we need it.
There's something else about April that kids, that a parent told me, kids said, was for juniors. A lot of juniors use April vacation week to start looking at schools.
They do too, go see, look at schools. That is absolutely true.
That was, that was a student coming.
Right.
Well, and you have in your packets a trip to Spain during April vacation, where I, I would imagine that's already been paid for and-
Several trips, I'm sure.
Yeah, I would, I would, you know, say too, for the April vacation, if we were to consider that, there are still going to be some families who have already made plans, are going to go away, and kids will miss school. Now, if we're going to take some of those days and make them mandatory school days, what do you do for the kids who still don't come? Do they somehow get to-
They're absent.
Right.
What do we do for teachers? One of the things that would happen if we take all or part of, because you don't have to take a whole week, but if you take all or part of April vacation, then I do think that the families who have expensive trips and reservations and so on will go, and there'll be a loss to those kids, but they will go. But what about teachers who have the same kinds of plans?
Yeah, well, the kids I spoke to were definitely open to a half-day on a Saturday as opposed to going deep into June also.
Well, we have some time, and it's still February, so- Well, we have some time, and it's still February, so maybe what we'll do is
Not that much time.
Let's get through the budget, and maybe one of our dates in March, we can talk about, because ultimately, it's our decision to adjust the calendar.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, the people I've talked to were surprised that we're only at six days. I did tell them, I said, "We're really only talking about one day right now." Right. So, they were, "Oh, okay." I did have somebody who said, "Don't do Good Friday." And then also, June 22nd right now is a Monday, so as of today, if we had one day, June 23rd, because I threw that out, I told people it could be weekend, it could be April, and then we were talking about June. Well, if it's only one more day, you know, going to the Tuesday, maybe that's not so bad.
We're already
But it's still, we're at one day, one day extra right now.
We're already at the, the 23rd is the last day right now.
Twenty
Twenty-third.
Oh, yes, right. Oh, okay.
So, is Good Friday early this year?
It's April 3rd.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't have a whole lot of, you know, people that may be making plans or whatever.
I would agree. I think the first meeting in April, we've got to address this for a bunch of reasons. If it were Saturday, you want to get it earlier so that, you know, into the sports season is one thing, that if you are going to impact any kind of April vacation, people have plans.
If you're going to switch a half-day.
And we're going to hear something from HEA, Alec, too, in terms of what those thoughts are, and so that you'll have more than a data. The thing is, it won't be clear consensus, but you beat the decision.
And I just have a question on the snow. During the vacation week, will they be working on clearing out the parking lots more, or?
I actually asked that question to Paula and Paul when I bumped them into them this morning.
I don't think that we can do a lot.
Too much
Or can the DPW?
DPW, yeah. We'll have to find out what their plans are, because things like knocking down those snowbanks
Right.
Is important.
Yeah.
Even, I can, I don't want to say I can live without sidewalks being plowed, but the bankings make it dangerous in doing anything, whether you're driving, walking, or whatever. The town has two sidewalk plows, and, you know, it's just physically not possible to get it done. But it is a good point, we haven't asked about that, about what their plans are.
Paul said he was going to check in with the DPW. If they could, I mean, I know I went over to East School, and I feel like I'm driving in a maze, I'm living in a maze right now. But East School, it's pretty tough, going down the East Gate Lane, and then turning in with the snowbanks there.
The other thing is
And the high school with the parking lot, I mean, every school with the parking lots.
The removal, we've got, you know, we had removed snow ironically last Saturday, removed truckloads of snow. South School had and still has a mound in the main parking lot, and that is, if the teacher can't park there, where are they supposed to park?
Right.
So, that's problematic. So, it's the removal and the knocking down of the banks. The plows will get done, it just takes a while, although they're now getting so high that when they come to somebody's driveway, that's high, hard snow, not easy to plow through.
Yeah, our street, it's a single lane, and every time the plow goes by, it falls down banks.
I should mention Patrick, Patrick as well, our transportation supervisor, you know, he was terrific the other day, actually took a bus, drove around himself, you know, was able to identify those places where they need, where the road was plowed, but the corner was too tight, and there are certain places in our routes where we do a turnaround, and those things. So, you know, everybody's really been very hands-on and very focused on getting kids back to school.
Okay, so tune in in March for that discussion and a decision. Next is 6.1, the annual report. I think a number of us have weighed in with some comments and revisions. It looks pretty good to me. Unless there's anything else, Dot would submit it by the 17th to Betty Tower.
We have to submit it by the 17th, and we don't have another meeting before then, so.
And I still have to finish mine for the building committee, and we had our meeting postponed, so I can't even get, so I have to send it to them by email, and it's disaster. So, thanks for that, Dot. Okay. We have a homeschool application late in the year, 6.3.
Yes, you have that information, I explained it in the summary, and I would be recommending it. This is a family that is not in Hingham the entire year, and in fact, this may be the last year that they are here in town, so I would approve this.
I have the motion that we approve the homeschooling application for Jake and Nate Cohen.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Who made that motion?
Carol did.
Liza.
Liza.
I thought it was Michael.
As I mentioned earlier, there is a high school field trip to Spain. I do note that they're leaving before vacation week starts, though.
Yeah, typically, those trips are, take a day or two.
Monsieur, are you growing it again?
I've decided to make the, I made the decision that I will not shave again until there's no more snow on the ground.
Ah, all right then. You're going to start to look like Johnson. Okay, so that looks like a great trip, got the itinerary terrific, so that should be fun.
I made the decision that it's a calendar year looking for this now.
There are a number of
I keep saying, I hope this is the last
Salary scale advancements, yeah, the lane changes, yeah, that's good, because now that won't be mid-year next year. And just to note, the appointment of Nina Sperry to be guidance counselor at the middle school. She's taken over from her role as the
Post-secondary?
Post-secondary advisor, right, at the high school.
She's supposed to start last Monday, so we've had two weeks, and we've had four days or less in the two weeks.
Great, so that's, we look forward to her being there. Forty-eight hour items, other than, we've covered them all.
We've covered them, thank you.
Okay. Subcommittee reports, I don't know that we have any. I would just mention two quick things relative to the projects. After a number of adjournments, we're scheduled to go before the Conservation Commission on the 17th for the high school fields and for the middle school, to get partial certificates of compliance on both counts for the orders of condition, which will be complete in the spring when grass grows in.
That's February 17?
Yeah, it's next Tuesday. Instead of the Monday, it's Tuesday, because of the holiday. And I've also been in touch with Mary Savage Dunham in the planning office about now that we're finally getting Conservation sign-off on the Fields project, and all of the as-built, final as-built plans have been filed and submitted, that we can have that one-year look back on the site plan review for the Fields that was part of the conditions, and particularly to take a look at the usage, because we've gotten a lot of feedback on, and we found out immediately that there would likely need to be some adjustments in that usage policy. Margaret has been talking to her coaches and gathering information and suggestions about what to change. So, it's a two-part process. First, we have to go back in, kind of get the look back, get the feedback, and then we actually have to submit a request to modify the site plan approval.
What's your timetable recommendation on that?
Well, we tentatively scheduled for March 9th for the first meeting.
Which would be with whom?
The planning board.
Okay.
And then, based on that, we would submit an application to modify the site plan approval, and hopefully go in within a month to request a change in those items in the usage policy.
I have not, but has anybody been over to the amenities building?
I drove by, but
Can you get to it?
You mean, in the snow? No.
Yeah, they haven't plowed that, no. So, you know, certainly Margaret and the coaches are gathering information about, you know, suggested changes, but if anyone has any thoughts about the usage at the high school that they'd like to share.
You said that was March 9th?
The first
Do we have a school committee meeting that night?
We do.
Okay.
They always meet Monday, they always meet Monday. So, I'll work the logistics of that out. But that's all I had on that. But it's good that we're finally moving forward. It took a long time, and folks, you know, folks at home have asked, "Well, gee, weren't we supposed to get that one-year look back, and whatever happened to, you know, taking a look at the usage?" The fact is that, you know, RAD took a little bit longer than we had hoped to finish some of the work in the fall, you know, some of the island grading didn't get done until November, the seeding was late, some other touch-up work was late, and getting the final as-built plan submitted didn't happen until early December. And then we've had a series of adjournments, the first time by the Conservation Commission, and then the last two times because of snow. So, we're now on the fourth date, and hopefully now that this is in place, we'll be able to move forward with this process and get it done, and get everything buckled up. So, that's
Speaking of adjournments.
That's all I had.
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion. Oh, Dot, did you have something?
Just one thing. One of the other snow day options that many people suggested was adding time. I got some really wonderful calculations, all accurate. If we added five minutes on to the beginning of the day, or five minutes on to the end, and we count all the days between now and the end of the year, and then we divide that by the number of school hours in a day, and then we get the number of days, and can't we do that? And many years ago, we could do that, but again, under the current thinking about 180 days and 900 or 990 hours per secondary, that doesn't fit the way of calculating days.
Sometimes in March, though, we skip and make it three weeks because of how it falls. We have to double-check that. I think you're right, though.
I have a meeting on the
Yeah, I do too.
But not on the second?
Not on the second.
No, because it's right after, we're meeting on the 23rd, that would be the week after.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.